Meeting. Thank you for that, Mr. Computer of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, can you advise everyone, this is a hybrid meeting, can you please advise everyone how you will be running the meeting, please?
Can you hear me now? Can you all hear me on Zoom?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Asking.
Thank you, Claire. So it's a hybrid meeting tonight, so that means that people from the commission and people from the public are joining both in person and on Zoom. We're gonna hear from the public first on in the room and then we're going to hear from those on Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you want to speak when you when the item is open to the public, please raise your hand, it's an icon on the screen and we will call on you in order. And those of you, everyone's video is off except the commissioners, so that's why you're only seeing the commissioners on screen.
Okay, thank you, Lynn, we'll do the roll call, John Goodwin, I am here, Mr. Chris.
Here.
Ms. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Radman.
Here.
Mr. Scornia.
Here.
Mr. Turner, he's not on yet, is he? Okay, Mr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Cassavant.
Here.
Mr. Herring.
Here.
Mr. Bash.
Here.
Okay, great, Mr. Herring, you are seated for Mr. Williams and Mr. Bash, you are seated for Mr. Turner. And let's go going with the public hearing, item number one, Skyview Lane, upon application of Charles Mills, Mills Engineering Authorized Agent for Paul Krikorian and Sophie Chang, apologies if I got that wrong, owners for special permit approval, sections three, four, C six, to allow construction of a new tennis court pool house and pool within 150 feet of a front yard. As the property situated on a corner lot, the proposed pool house and tennis court would be approximately 51 and 129 feet respectively from the property line, fronting on Davenport Ridge Road and the two acre zone at 14 Skyview, who's here to present, please?
Evening, I'm Charlie Mills, sorry, it's been about a year and a half since I've been in public, it's been virtual for a long time. Predominantly, I present in Greenwich, I've been doing professional services since 2003, it's my first time here in New Canaan. So I started on this project, I was called in to do the drainage analysis. I then started working with Kathleen Holland as we found out that downstream or down down slope of us are the headwaters of the Springdale Brook and there's a small wetlands that's situated offsite. We made a wetland application, we've since received a permit. As you just summarized, the project is for a proposed tennis court pool house. It's situated on a corner lot and as such, there's two front yards. If Davenport Ridge Road wasn't there, I mean, I would think this would be perfectly situated in the rear yard, this development. But as such, we're requesting a special permit. As in, I believe we meet all the criteria of the regulations. I started this talking to Maria Copeland, who's the town engineer, to get her on board with our analysis concept for the drainage. We saw very much eye to eye on how to approach this project. The plan exceeds what's required in the town of New Canaan, which requires 25 year storm volume or peak runoff rate to be detained on the site. We achieved this for the 50 year peak flow rate. I think in light of the flooding that's occurred, that this was a very prudent measure. The plan itself, now Lynn, if you could bring up, I would say the the survey. Now let's take a look at that so people can see what I'm talking about. Also here with me tonight, I have Dan Sherman, our landscape architect, who worked on the planting plan. I have Anderson Alves from ABC Construction, in case there are any questions that you need answer, they're both on the Zoom call. Now. It's hard to see here, so there's the house, there's Skyview Lane, which I would call the true front yard. Davenport Ridge has a mature stand of trees on it and it's set well below the property and has top graphical screening with it. In the back right corner, which is the southeast corner, and Lynn, if you could please pull up the development plan, if it's close by, just for a picture, there it is, is where we're proposing to situate the tennis court. The pool area will be slightly closer to the road, as was mentioned, the the pool house will be 46 feet approximately off the property line, that's a budding on Davenport Ridge Road and the tennis court will be 129 feet away. The existing septic system were relocated in association with the construction of the tennis court, that's already been approved by the New Canaan Health Department. As I previously mentioned, Kathleen Holland reviewed this. She issued a permit and she thought it was a very complete application. At this point, I'm wondering if there are any any questions or?
Any questions for the applicant?
This is Dan Radman of regarding the pool location, is there a reason it's located to the north of the site closer to Davenport Ridge and not on the other side of the house, south of the house?
Well. I would say is that when you pull up on Skyview Rain, the the true rear yard or the feeling of it, this is for privacy predominantly, I would say is why it's situated there. Also, I would say to get it away from the tennis court itself, there's also a tree that we're trying to preserve. You could see there's chamfer corners in the tennis court, it's not a full sized tennis court, which is typically 60 by 120, and we're trying to preserve that tree in that area.
Charlie, can I add one thing?
Absolutely, Dan.
The reason the position, the pool was positioned there is there is a walkout.
Sir, please state your full name and
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your company.
Daniel Sherman, landscape architect, the pool was positioned there halfway between the basement elevation and the first floor because there's a generous walkout basement, double doors and a fully finished basement and we wanted the pool to relate better to that, that was my reason.
Anybody else? Anybody, commissioners on Zoom, any questions for the applicant?
I have some questions on building materials for the pool house and the pool itself and deck, the deck will be, the pool deck will be fieldstone.
Dan, you want to take this?
Right now, it's shown to be bluestone, it may turn to a porcelain material that looks very much like bluestone, but it will be or look like a natural stone material. Nothing particularly glitzy because the house is is a beautiful, I don't know if it's Queen Anne exactly, but you know, a pretty Victorian style house, so we'll use a natural looking material. Right now, it's presumed to be bluestone.
Thank you, for the question, I didn't identify myself, Commissioner John Chris, the pool houses, they seem to be two houses, two very small ones.
Is that correct? That is correct, there are two pool cabanas and there's an arbor essentially between them, a pergola, excuse me. Originally, it was thought that we would have bathroom facilities in it, they've since been removed, but it's a changing room, I believe, and storage, is that correct, Dan?
That's right.
So the two structures will have electricity but no plumbing?
Correct.
And originally, I intended the pool filter to be in one of them, but we've moved that closer to the house where the air conditioners used to be, you know, when the geothermal system gets put in, we'll remove those air conditioners and that place became better situated for the pool filter equipment.
You've mentioned geo, you're putting a geothermal heating system in?
It's it's being contemplated, nothing's been finalized yet, but yes, there's also
Pulled permits or anything for that?
No.
Okay, and the structure, the building materials for the two cabanas will be what?
They will match the siding and the trim and the roof of the main dwelling. Everything will be made to match exactly.
Be a natural wood exterior?
I think it's natural wood shingles and wood trim and the same color roof material.
And all utilities, such as wires and so forth, will be buried on site?
Yes. For the new structure, yes.
Yeah, and are there going to be lights on the tennis court?
No.
So the only lighting would be just around the pool, contemplated, is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, commissioners, are we all good?
This is Commissioner. This is Commissioner Cassavant, I do have a question, have there been any concerns from any of the abutting neighbors?
We will, we'll open it up to the public once we're done with our questions and yes, we will be receiving testimony, I suspect.
Mr. Chairman. I believe their landscape architect is here, what's the landscaping plan? Can you pull that up, Lynn, and he is, he was the one answering questions via Zoom, it's Dan Sherman, Dan Sherman Landscape Architecture.
There it is, that's, that's not it, next. If you're looking for the planting plan, that's it.
Could you walk through the types of plants and whether they're native or exotic?
Yes, well, along Davenport Ridge Road, you recently put in 30 Norway spruce at 12 to 14 feet high, they're all planted there as a buffer to screen between the property and Davenport Ridge and this and vice versa. Those were planted last spring, around the rest of the property, there's a mix of things native, I mean, not native, but existing around the adjacent properties, so I didn't want to make any full hedge, so I have a mixture of things, I have Leyland cypress, robusta green juniper, there's white pine to blend in with some of the white pines that are adjacent, I don't use a lot of white pines recently, but in this case, there was some adjacent right off the property, so I wanted to blend in and then on the south side, I think it is this right hand side of the property, it's under the shade of maples and so I use hemlocks in that location because they can take the shade a little bit better. There's magnolia on the plan, so it's white pine hemlock, robusta green juniper, that's a large, almost like arborvitae like juniper, a little wilder than and more natural looking than arborvitae. Up front near the street, not in the rear yard at all, but we're planting some pin oaks and some fruiting apple trees. The shrubbery is mixed, I think I have laurels, I don't see the list, I didn't write it down, but I know I have laurels in the shade and I think I have a rose, some roses Sharon. Chesapeake holly, which is my standard screen, the pool filter device to and some skip laurels, Prague viburnum. And we have some grassy things, the Carl Forester grass, it's spelled wrong, it's forester. As far as if they're native or not, I'm not sure about all of them. The rhododendrons are the viburnum, but I don't know this Prague, I chose the Prague variety because it's it grows very large and it's nearly evergreen in most winters, it's quite evergreen and grows well, so we use that a lot where we want to have a real dense screening of a large plant. Pin oaks are native. Hemlocks.
Thank you.
Mr. Scornia, did you have a question?
No, it's same with about the neighbors concerns.
Okay, great, okay.
Looks like.
Enlarging the plant list because I didn't remember.
Hey, James Bash, is there any artificial lighting that's planned for the tennis court?
No. No.
Anybody else?
I one, Chris Herring here, Commissioner Chairman, just wanted to re-understand the question that was asked earlier as to the orientation of the pool. Being closer to the setback from Davenport Ridge versus the you know, versus adjacent to the tennis court here, the the logic was a preservation of a tree, I'm just trying to understand that the justification for the setback.
Well, there's, there's several, Dan mentioned also, it's adjacent to the walkout basement for convenience. There also is trees which are to the south of the tennis court, just south and west of it, we're also trying to situate it far enough away from the new septic system, which is down slope.
Okay, down slope there in the front yard near the parking area?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me back up for a moment also, there's two, there's four existing retention systems on the property associated with the original development from back in 2002. You could see them on that plan there, they're hatched, they're just off of the, yes, thank you, Lynn, perfect, perfect, those right there, they're just off of the motor court as well. That's another reason why it's situated where it is, I would say not to disrupt those existing drainage systems.
This is Dan Radman, I think what helps a lot, if you, if you have the deck open from the town website, the 14 Skyview Lane PDF, it's a pretty substantial package of information, it's like 150 plus pages. Page 144, if you want to scroll to that, that gives an aerial of that rear. Yep. Keep going, right there, that one, that can kind of explains the move in terms of the positioning of the pool because you have a basement level discharge, which are the three doors kind of shown on the bottom corner of the house that are coming out and up to the pool and then you're going further up to the patio area, so this does seem like a natural positioning of the pool, given the site conditions and given the the existing house egress out of the lower level. Does that help, Chris?
No, it does help, Dan, thank you. Thank you. And no further questions here.
Okay, everybody good?
This is Kristin Nielsen, I just have one question, I don't have the PDF with me, but was there, there were pictures of the screening from the existing screening from them?
Yes, Lynn, could you bring those up?
Walk us quickly through what it looks like from Davenport Ridge and?
Okay, so this picture is taken at the corner of Skyview in Davenport Ridge, looking south. Go ahead, Lynn, let's see, this is looking to the east along the existing screening, you could see the new, I believe there are variety that were put in and there's existing deciduous trees as well. Okay, and this is looking north and again, we're right up just north of the existing residence, looking north towards Davenport Ridge Road at the screening. This is starting to look to the south, excuse me, the northeast, okay, again, looking at the screening and the pool area will be situated just to the right of that photograph. Okay. Okay, so look, this is looking northeast from the proposed pool area. And what would be behind me and to the left would be the existing residence and again, we're looking at Davenport Ridge Road here. From essentially the center line of the pool. And this is looking east from what the center of the pool would be. Down the slope, go ahead, Lynn. Okay, and this is looking to the south. The tennis court will be situated, that was the big tree I was talking about, we're trying to preserve right there, the tennis court will be just to the left of that. And that's looking down, yes, there we go, that's, that's at the that's on Skyview Lane and we're looking down along the southern property line. Okay. And here we are and the captions are doing a great job, south in Davenport Ridge, again, adjacent to the west side of the property. You could see it's situated up on the hillside there, again, here we go, we're looking from across the road down to the southeast. And you can see the screening that's present and again, we're moving down the road, looking back up at the house here. To give you an idea of the screening that's present and then here is looking directly to the south along the eastern property line. From Davenport Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir, starting with the room, who from the public would like to address this application, kindly step to the podium, please?
Hi there, I'm Patricia Frontoxman, I live at 277 Davenport Ridge Road. And 14 Skyview share a boundary line with us and an old wall as well. We, we're on the western, on the western border of our property. Our house, by the way, is 281 years old, so it sort of is grandfathered into everything, so this is and I can imagine, by the way, how exciting the plans are for this project, but I have a number of concerns. From our point of view, we only got a notice about this about a week ago in the mail and there's an awful lot of paperwork involved and it's a pretty complicated thing for a layperson to understand, at least. But one of the things I'd like to ask for is that the application perhaps not be approved tonight to give us more time to look into several issues. And the main issue for us is about water. We have had during the last few years, our property has tremendous problems with flooding from the Springdale Brook overflowing and it it runs of late right by our our house. And it's very, very near the house, I have left two little videos with you to look at that we took from the last storm. Ida hit us, but then the next storm after that, I you had, I submitted this afternoon, two, two videos that show how strong the the damage was and the the current was from the, from the brook that runs through our property. And the way it's flowing these days. So, you know. There was enough force to move large flagstones, carry stone dust by the, by the bushel load into our patio and onto our, into our pool. Move sandbags that the town put down yards away and wrecked a wall that was actually put up by the town as well. The, the property from Skyview, the Skyview property is all upslope from us and I'm worried that in intense storms, the drainage system for 14 Skyview may not accommodate the overflow onto our property, which is already having extreme water problems. You know, so it's, it's all downhill, so it, it's pretty scary, anyway, the the other questions I had were less important, but still, I care, I was wondering about the chain link fence and where it actually will be in regard to the wall which we share. And I wanted to know about the lighting on the tennis court and that was added and any maybe lighting on the pool, I don't know what that would be like, but I think there's a lot to work out here in the next few weeks to try to figure out more of implications for us about the way the water runs and how that would affect our property and the problem we already have. Thank you.
Thank you, would anybody else from the public like to address this application? Would anybody, Lynn, let's, you would, please?
Hi, I'm Pam Chin, I live at 291 Davenport Ridge Road, I'm on the corner of Davenport and Ponus and our property is a rectangle with a long tail that goes behind the Oxman's house up towards the 14 Skyview and the little stream goes through that property. In recent storms, we too have had a lot of water. Just this, I think it was last week's storm, we had, I've never seen so much water and I didn't know about this meeting and I should have taken some photos because I didn't know what to do with all the water that was behind our barn, that's what, where we park our cars and you drive down our driveway. And then turn around into our barn and it was completely full of water going towards Skyview. So the whole tarmac or tar area asphalt and beyond was just, it looked like a lake, you know, behind there, so I guess I'm just concerned to make sure that, you know, that that there isn't more water going into, I don't know how the pool is and the runoff from the tennis court will affect and how it links into the this little stream, it's only couple of feet wide and it's not very deep, so it does spread out, so. So I just wanted to figure out how that water is going to affect this stream.
Okay, thank you, anybody else like, what's, I'd like to take all public input first, please. Lynn, let's check Zoom to see if any, anyone would like to address the application.
If anyone on Zoom wants to speak, could you just raise your hand, please?
Okay, sir, we welcome your, your remarks and the testimony, the neighbors. Before you, Lynn, all the notices are appropriate, notice the neighbors were mailed on time, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, please proceed.
Again, it's Charlie Mills again. And I want to say that I understand exactly what you folks are saying in light of the storm that just occurred and from the very outset, I believe it was Mrs. Oxman, I was looking at your property specifically because it's down slope and there's a lawn area, it's not vegetated, it's just down slope of, of the property. And Lynn, when you get a moment, if you could pull back up the site development plan, I'd appreciate it because what we're doing is we're collecting all the water from the pool area, right now, as you know, there's a, there's a hillside, it's grass. Runoff from the property goes down slope, discharges along the property line somewhat evenly. What we're proposing is to collect all the water from the pool area, it goes into an underground retention system where volume goes in there, infiltrates into ground, okay, then the overflow from that is going to connect with the overflow from the tennis court drainage system, the tennis court drainage system is a rain garden that lines the entire tennis court. Okay, it's going to go into the rain garden, the soil media is going to throttle this back and it's going to slowly release the discharge of water. Now, the overflow from all of this is situated at the extreme southeast corner of the property. There it is on my screen, it wasn't working, it's hard to see on these plans, but again, is the overflow is at the southeast corner of the property, which is down slope of both of your properties and it's directly upslope of this wetland cell that I was talking about, now, obviously, I can't control, you know, the existing flooding problems that occur there. What we're doing is we're capturing all this water associated with the development and we're either infiltrating it into the ground or we're throttling it and slowly releasing it out to control the rate and as I said, is that a 25 year storm, which is 6.4 inches of water in a day is what's required and we're, we're capturing the 50 year storm, which is almost eight inches of water in a day. Now, I'm dealing with a lot of flooding calls right now, you know, there's places that had four inches of rain in an hour, which is essentially a 500 year event, which is something that's, you know, it's extreme and it's something we can't control. But we did our best efforts, again, I vetted this for the town engineer, to pick up all the water and discharge it in a location that made the most sense. It's a wooded area and there's nothing between us and the existing brook from where our discharge location is. So I look at this, that this will be an improvement because right now you have essentially that whole grass area, which is just up slope of both of your properties, which are discharging there, we're collecting that water, restoring it, we're discharging it down slope of your properties. That's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners, I, I think we can do one of two things, one is we can continue this and give the applicant the opportunity to meet with the neighbors, discuss the reports that they've done and the work they've done in terms of drainage, or I can close the meeting, close the hearing. So what, what, what do you think?
Just continuing it, I did look at the video that was provided by his oxman and it was a lot of water. It was literally running down steps and so forth, so it seemed to be quite severe, how this particular construction will affect that. I understand the the applicant's idea, which is what you have now is lawn, and so whatever doesn't get soaked in immediately, just gravity takes it downhill towards the neighbors. And they're representing this may be an improvement. I still think a live conversation with the neighbors would be useful in this case. And delaying it for a month, I don't see is going to somehow impair the the applicant, so I would advocate delaying it for a month and we'll give them a time to chat.
And I thank you, Mr. Cruz. Everybody come up with that.
I think you should have time to really understand and
Okay, so, Mr. Mills, what we we would like you to do is meet with the neighbors. One of the things we do encourage applicants to do in New Canaan is before coming to the public hearing to reach out all the neighbors and doing, you know, engage them in conversations and you know, that, you know, try to avoid these types of delays, but this will be continued. Thank you. Okay. Item number two eighty one Canoe Hill Road, upon application of David Rucci, Lampertui and Rucci Authorized Agent for Philip Tuwey, Trustee Owners for Special Permit Approval of Sections three, four, C six to allow the placement of a temporary recreational structure ice rink in a front yard forty five feet in lieu of one hundred and fifty feet from November twenty one to February twenty eight, twenty two. Mr. Rucci.
Yeah, hi, good evening. David Rucci, Lampertui and Rucci here in New Canaan. This evening I have with me Cam Mackey, who's the owner of the property. It's owned in a trust, but Cam is the actual occupant of the of the property. Rich Palmer should be online from Pro Rinks. And Doug Divested did some of the engineering for the Health Department approval. I'm not sure Doug will be on because he, excuse me, has a hearing at the same time right now over in Darien. So I will try to answer any questions that may he may need to answer from the engineering, but when I spoke to him earlier today, he said for the most part, all his work was done under the guise of the Health Department approval. So that he felt like the commission should be fairly satisfied with the fact that the Health Department approved it because that's really the only thing that he used as far as it went for this particular project was getting Health Department approval. So to give you a little bit of background, I know that this commission sees a lot of applications that come in for this hundred and fifty foot rule in the front yard or off the street. And you don't see a lot of temporary ice rinks. And that's generally because when you go for a temporary structure like this, these illuminated temporary structures under six point four. You really only need to apply for building permit most of the time. The only reason this one's necessarily in front of you is just based on the fact that it's within that hundred and fifty foot rule. So I know many of you have seen, you know, throughout New Canaan, you'll see these ice rinks in in yards. This one's a little bit more has has more to it than potentially the ones that you just see that are that are put up with the the plastic in the yellow. But there's probably, you know, that I know of in New Canaan, probably four to five that I know of that are gonna be a lot like the one that we're gonna talk about tonight. So Lynn, if you could just go to the survey, that would be great. So essentially, you're, yeah, this is fine. Let's start here. So this is a really old piece of property up on Canoe Hill Road. It's not sure any of you were here during the Johnson Lee sagas of this subdivision, but it was a twenty acre piece of property whereby this front house was divided off the twenty acres into the back and there was a lot created in the front, which is a vacant lot. And then this house is essentially still sitting in the same position that it was in the past. And the driveway continues to come from Canoe Hill Road. Although technically speaking, its front edge is over on Devonwood Road because they access this particular piece of property through a right of way that has existed since literally the nineteen hundreds for this particular piece of power for this property. So it's just an interesting concept here because when the applicant first started to go for this temporary rink, he didn't realize his front yard was Devonwood Road because essentially that's always been his side yard. So the reason why we're here now is because this particular piece of property where we're trying to put this temporary rink is going to be approximately forty five feet from the property line and about seventy feet from the traveled way of Devonwood Road. Seventy five feet from the traveled way of Devonwood Road. The particular piece of property is a two point eight four seven acre piece of property. The vacant lot, which is also owned by the Mackeys, is about two point six acres in the front off of Canoe Hill Road. Like I said, that's where the access comes from. The applicant is proposing to construct a temporary ice rink on this particular piece of property. The ice rink itself, as you can see on this particular piece of property, it's roughly forty feet by ninety feet. That's about how big the rink would be. And I have a picture, I think, at the end that I can show you, which is similar to what this will look like. The rink itself is going to be served by chillers, so it actually stays cold during the months from November to roughly February twenty eighth. And if the board is so inclined to approve this, one of the Health Department conditions is that the rink can only operate from November one to February twenty eighth. So that's obviously something that we're perfectly fine with. The, as far as the steps go to putting this rink up and down, I'll let Rich Palmer talk about that when we get to it. But I just think that the most important thing to understand from this particular piece, this particular project is that this particular rink will go up in November, it will come down each February at the end. It is, it takes a lot of care to put these up and take them down. We did go to the neighbors and most of their concerns had to do with the use of Devonwood Lane. The people in Devonwood Lane are not used to actually this property doing anything off Devonwood Lane because that's not really the way they access it. So initially, there was talk about, we were gonna put this up and down visa v. Devonwood Lane. But the neighbors, you know, really weren't pleased with that. So we've talked to them and we're more than willing to do all the construction of this particular ice rink easy to be from Devon, from Canoe Hill Road. My application says it's gonna come off Devonwood Lane, but that's no longer the case based on the conversations that we've had with the neighbors. The second big item that they had from Devonwood Lane perspective was they wanted to make sure that if, you know, they were having more than a couple of people over to skate on this ring that there wouldn't be parking on Devonwood Lane as well. That is also something that the applicant is more more than willing to agree to and would also be a condition that we would be agreeable to. Should you approve this particular application? So anyway, those are the, those were really the two main things that the neighbors wanted. The other thing they talked about was noise. How how noisy is it gonna be? My experience with other applica- with other people who have done this particular, these particular projects has been that since it's really only done during the day, first of all, it's a day event. There's no lights or anything on this particular rink, but most of people are inside. So even if you're a neighbor inside, you're generally inside, you're not really gonna be affected by what's happening outside on an ice rink. I mean, it's unlike, you know, paddock pool parties and pool patios where some people are sitting out on their their own patios and they're hearing all sorts of noise coming from somewhere else. So that was what I discussed, at least with some of the neighbors that called me. Most of them, as I said, though, were really more concerned with the parking. You will know when we start going through some of the pictures that we have, there's a lot of mature trees on this particular piece of property already. It's pretty well surrounded over on the Devonwood side and on the neighbor to the north. And also, you know, the neighbors from Devonwood, not only do they have this forty five feet and then seventy five feet to the travel way, they have another rest of the Devonwood Lane and plus their setbacks. So most of these other houses are over two hundred feet away from where this rink will be will be placed. As I said, everything's gonna be accessed through Canoe Hill Road, so there's not gonna be any access placed anywhere else. And if any of my application mentions that, that was initially something that we talked about, so I want that to be noted here that we have agreed to do everything off Canoe Hill Road. It has been approved by the Health Department. One of the rationales behind is this actually sits on top of some of the septic fields that are from the current septic system. So one of the things that we had to go out and do was A, confirm that these fields were in good shape, which we did. In fact, when I talked to Doug the Vest about it and when Jen Ielson came out there, they were, you know, in great shape, bone dry. There was no issue with them. Notwithstanding that, we did have to go out and confirm that if for some odd reason these fields do fail, that we have another area for code compliance system and you'll see that on this survey as well. It says proposed septic system, but that's really only in the event that we needed. We're not gonna be putting one in anytime soon. And that was actually another question that came up from one of the neighbors. Canoe Hill continue to be a single family residence? If Rich is on, I guess I can have him go through just how the rink kind of comes up and down. I know you guys are gonna have an application from the town. I don't know how, when, but at some point in the future. So this may be helpful also from that perspective and Rich Palmer does a lot of these rings around here. He's very well versed at how they come up and how they go down and how you take care of them. And he'll be taking care of this rink as well. Is Rich on?
I am.
Oh. So Rich, just introduce yourself and your company and then just give a, you know, a little background on yourself and and how these rings generally go up and down for the commission.
Hi, my name is Rich Palmer from Pro Rinks. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I specialize in temporary rinks in residential settings. We start construction November first and the season usually goes weather permitting till end of February, first week of March. The breakdown on this rink will be a little bit earlier, will be a hundred percent out by the end of February. It's a process where everything is removed at the end of the season and it's returned right before construction. Construction is, there will be no machines needed for the construction of the rinks. It's all done by hand through my team and myself. It's, this particular rink is forty four feet by ninety feet. My system includes a matting system that has polyethylene tubes that are filled with an antifreeze, which is propylene glycol. They're connected to headers which connect to the chillers. There's two chillers and one pump and that circulates the antifreeze through it. And those chillers are the size of large air conditioning units and I can dictate to them when they run. And there's a lot of times where there are noise constraints. We don't run at night. And if it's cold out, they don't run at all. That being said, they do run sometimes and we've had some issues with noise, but we address them as needed, but there there, those are very few. After the matting goes down, boards are put up around the rink for the hockey rink setting. They're forty two inches high. There will be no lighting here. And it's one hundred percent temporary. There's no heavy machinery putting these together. It's two days of construction, three days of construction at most. And then a lot of ice making time, but that's quiet. It's it's off of a hose and there is no noise to do that.
Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions for for myself or for Mr. Palmer or for the applicant. We're happy to address any.
Okay, commissioners.
I have a question. This is Dan Radman. You mentioned the the rink will go up and then come back down at the end of February. Are you taking down the walls or are you actually taking up chiller piping that's below the rink's surface and reinstating grass or is?
Actually, not to cut you off, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what what level of removal is taking place and what is gonna, what's going to be visible between March and October?
Gotcha. So we go in and right now that berm is grass. And it's, it will be returned to that when the season is over. Everything I do, there's zero ground penetrations. We level off whatever low spots there are on the platform of the rink area. Then we level that off with foam core boards. There's no additional soil, sand. It's one hundred percent a removable system and you're, when we go in, we're on grass and when we leave, there's grass. There's no piping, there's no buried pipe, there's no ground anchors. We are one hundred percent above the ground and then everything will be removed via trucks and trailers that are equivalent to landscape trailers. We don't have semis or flatbeds coming in. It's we'll pull in through the main driveway on Canoe Hill and we're we're, it takes three days to build, three days to break down.
It's a modular modular system of platforms.
Affirmative.
David, what's the intended use of this rink? Is there a hockey club? Are there teams?
So the Maggie's them, sorry, so the Maggie's themselves are winter club members, so any sort of team plays at the winter club. This is really just for their own personal use. There's not gonna be teams practicing there. I mean, there may be other children, obviously, from that they know and children from the neighborhood who will skate on it, but it's not being designed to have any games or referees or anything that's gonna create any additional noise other than skating or if you were playing basketball outside in the summer, if you're playing tennis, I mean, it's gonna be used for those particular items. It's not for clubs or anything like that.
This is John Chris. Could you talk about the noise emission from the chillers and wiring for all that? What it will look like from the road and from neighbors' homes?
Yes, if you wanna pull back up the survey, please, Lynn. So the chillers are they're to the north. They're above the the site right now. They're being circled by Lynn right now. And if you can just kind of hold that and then if Lynn, can you go to the end where I have all my trees? Those were sent a couple of days ago to Lynn, to Lola. They're gonna be very well screened. That whole property line is very well screened. Already, the Mackey's already in the back have a pool in that area up higher up than this, but this is looking to the north. This is looking back down towards Devonwood. This is also to the north. Sorry, this is, so that's where the chillers are right now and you can see the tree line that sits there. And that's our RMS or the walkers actually live there now. The walkers and the Holsons live in that house right there. And that's also looking down towards Devonwood Lane. So there's there's some some pretty big screening there and that's essentially what it looks like when it's done. This is not, this is a different house, but that's that's essentially what the 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 rink will will look like. And you can see that it's all, there's nothing anchored to the ground in this particular case. And as Mr. Palmer was talking about, it just kind of comes in and comes out.
Okay. Yeah, James Bash, can you please walk me through the decision making between having a temporary ice rink versus a permanent ice rink?
Sure. Putting a, putting in, I mean, what I've seen norm, most of the time, Shabash, is that people will have a tennis court and they'll have a tennis court in in place, you know, during the summer and the spring, and then they'll put these ice rinks on top of it. And but always these ice swings come up and down because, you know, obviously you're not gonna be able to make ice or keep ice or anything cold or frozen during any of the spring or summer months. So you really do need cold weather, even with these chillers. And that's been the experience. I think Rich can, Palmer can also attest to that. And that's been the experience with some of my other clients that have put these particular rings in. But in this particular case, since there is no underlying tennis court, it's 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 gotta come up and down. There's no, there's no sense in keeping it there all year round. And also that would not be allowable under our Health Department approval as well.
Okay, and then a second question, just following up on the noise emission from the chillers. For any of the abutting neighbors, if any one of them were very sensitive to the noise conditions in their environments, would there be likelihood that they would hear the the chiller throughout the winter season?
I can let Rich Palmer address that as well. I know that they're on sometimes. They're not on all the time. It really depends on how cold it is. I did talk to Mr. Mackey actually before I came in and we talked a little bit about, you know, maybe we put additional screen around the maybe we put additional screen around the chillers that would deaden some of the noise. And then he said, I'm not opposed to doing anything like that. That's, that would be fine if that was some sort of condition from the commission. He'd be wanting to put in some screening around the chores, if that makes sense. I've seen them do that before on some of the air conditioning units that are above some of our commercial buildings. I think that was one of the things they did over on Pine Street. But I can let Rich Palmer, if you don't mind, Rich, can you respond to sort of the chillers and the noise? I mean, they have to obviously all be within the regulations, so they can't be higher than a certain decimal no matter what. And these particular chillers will fall underneath that.
Yes. Yes, they are, you know, point blank, they're, they're two large air conditioning units that, that are on during the day on sunny days. If it's cold, they're not on. Yes, they do make noise. We've had one instance where we've put up soundproofing, sound deadening panels around them and they've helped quite a bit. And if Mr. Mackey is interested in doing that, 100% that can be done. Usually we've done it in two different, one in, one in Greenwich, one in Darien. That if a neighbor does hear that and complains, we'll, we'll do that just because it's a an added expense, but it's definitely doable. Again, that's a temporary structure that would basically, you know, go around the chiller and the pump area and, and it has some pretty good results, really good results. And yeah, each unit, each unit is 100 amps of service. The electrician will be pulling a temporary run from the house and also from the pool panel service, 100 on each. Pulling it through conduit and then we lay rubber on top of them. So they're wrapped in conduit, then wrapped in rubber and it's a temporary system as well. There'll be, they'll go to a disconnect at the unit itself. They'll run through the season. After the end of the season, they get turned off, disassembled. Everything gets rolled up, marked, labeled and goes with all the other ring components.
Okay. So, so just to be clear, and I'm just going to refer the question back to Mr. Richie. My sense is that the applicant would not be averse to a condition that said, if any abutting neighbors at any point in the future wanted some sort of sound dampening equipment to be installed, the applicant would be fine with that condition. Is that correct? Because my concern overall is it's, it sounds like you guys gave proper notification to abutting neighbors, but one isn't really going to know the noise level coming from this until they actually experience it. And it's, it's not something we can really predict at this moment.
Yeah, I think that's completely fair and we would be agreeable to that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Dan Radman. Do you know the noise emission level on the two chiller units? What is it rated for at a given distance?
I, I do have that, but I have it for only one. So it would be false information for me to, because they, they run in tandem. I could have run, one runner at one time, but they do run together and there's a pump. I can definitely get that information. I'd, I'd have to do some calculations and have systems run, but yes, because it's a, most of my systems are larger. This is a scaled down version. So there's only two chillers. So I have it for one individual chiller and they're marked out through, you know, five feet, 20 feet, 75 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet, the decibels. And they do fall under the guidelines, but I don't have those exact numbers, but we can.
Yeah, Rich, I, I did put in the application. I think that you told me that the decibel level of the two chillers in one pump are 49 dpa at 20 feet. Is that just?
Yeah, no, let me, yeah, if, if that's the case of with, with two, and it actually is less than that because I believe that 49 was for three. So if that, then it's, it's probably, yeah, yeah. Okay.
20 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was, and that's what, that's what we can certainly represent to when we put it together, when we put the application together, I asked that. And so that's in the narrative as well.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
Are, are you, would you be willing to have a condition? I'm not quite sure what the proper wording would be, but that it would not be used for organized clubs, teams, you know, I'm not quite sure of the proper wording, but.
I mean, it's not really big enough to have an actual game on. I mean, a regular range 200 feet long, right? So it's not like you could have a, a game and they're not going to have practices on it. You know, for the most part, it's going to be used for, yeah, there, I'm sure their teammates will be over there. Whoever their friends are and skaters are on the particular team, obviously like anything else, I mean, and, and I said this to one of the neighbors as well. I said, this is a special permit that if there's some sort of, you know, it's, it's too noisy and you can always come back to this commission and, and say they're not doing what they said they were going to be doing. They're holding games out there every day or what have you. And they always have the right to come back to this commission. So I just think that's a slippery slope to try to figure out like, why are they having a game? You know, they're not going to have like the winter club bantam A team there practicing each week. They have their own, they have their own ice to do that on. No one's going to want to come there. And I don't think the Mackie's going to want them there either.
All right. Well, maybe just to leave it that if, if the neighbors are disturbed that they express a concern to Lynn and then maybe.
And we have to come back, just like any other application for a special permit. And the Mac has reached out to all of them. They have his phone number and he's been very clear that, hey, come and talk to me. I'm your neighbor. You know, this is something that we're putting in and we need to know that you guys are happy about as well. We've talked to a number of the neighbors on this.
So I shouldn't give up my Rangers season tickets?
No, you, you can pass them along. You have a good year.
Your lips to God's ears. Any other commissioners? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Would anyone in the room like to address this application? Okay, Lynn, let's check Zoom, please.
Would anyone on Zoom like to speak? If you would, could you please raise your hand?
Okay, super. This application's closed. Thank you, Lynn. Item number three, planning zoning commission will hold a public hearing for text amendment to the zoning regulations regarding a temporary prohibition of cannabis establishments. Everybody has the draft text amendment. As you can see where the draft stands right now is still needs a little bit of work. There's some recommendations here. And it is, Lynn, can you explain to us, we did talk about this, but just explain to us again, why this is a temporary prohibition and then give us your recommendation for the time period for the prohibition, please?
Sure. The, as part of the public act, 21, two that passed recently with all the recent proposals by the state, there was a there was an addition that they added that cannabis would be permitted. But they left out that they haven't, the state hasn't actually created the guidelines for how this program would function. And so several municipalities have already taken the steps to prohibit it, some of them temporarily, and to come back and revisit it when the state has come up with their guidelines and how this, how this would function. The recommendation would be that we would prohibit this for 24 months with the assumption that the state would have put the guidelines in place at that time. And that we could revisit this and either ban it permanently or keep it as a temporary prohibition. As we heard from council last month, he noted that if we don't take any action and it remains right now, if cannabis establishment comes in under existing retail establishments, then it would be permitted to continue, even if we banned it in the future.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. And then my next question is, you know, we have these notations, so we have to make, in order to approve this, we have to make amendments elsewhere in the regulations.
Yeah, so we're so this would be added to section 4.1.5. It's under the existing regulations for marijuana, but we have to add, and we would add the purpose and the prohibition. And then the definitions for cannabis and cannabis establishments would be added to section 2.2, the definitions.
So we need to get drafts for all that. We, we need to get drafts of those changes as well, don't we? Okay. So you're comfortable that, I mean, we're going to listen to the public. We're going to take input, but you're comfortable. If we close this, we could potentially vote on this as is with the addition of the 28, the 24 months. Okay.
Well, so James Bash, if we were so inclined, what would be impeding us from having a indefinite prohibition? So not even mentioning the 24 months presumably longer. So if the commission was so.
Mr. Bash, Mr. Bash is asking, why not just go ahead and impose a permanent ban?
I can't hear John. I'm sorry. I can't hear.
Sorry. If I understood counsel last month correctly, if you, if we do that, we don't have the chance to go back and revisit it after the state drafts their own regulations.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Any other commission, you know, I, I think, I mean, again, we want to listen to the public. I think we as a commissioner in sync on this. We had, we've had a few discussions. But, but any other comments on the draft?
Can I just ask a question? I was going to try and look up section 21A dash 240 of the general statutes right now, but don't we currently have a CBD store on Elm Street? It's not, it's not considered cannabis under this. Okay. I just wondered if we were making that a problem.
I have one question on the draft. This is Dan Radman. In the first paragraph where it notes that the last sentence is to temporarily prohibit adult use cannabis. Why do we need the word adult use? Wouldn't it be more global, just prohibit cannabis establishments, period?
I can just. Well, hey, Dan, I'm wondering.
I can just see someone trying to sneak a loophole in there, you know, 18 and under only, come and get it.
Yeah. Well, I suspect Lynn, this, that this language is from attorney, but Bumante, right? Yeah, Dan, just looking at it again, I think it's simply saying that because it refers back to an act concerning responsible and equitable regulation of adult use cannabis. So I think what Bumante is going to say.
I see.
We're addressing that legislation.
Keep the language in the legislation.
We're, we're prohibit, yeah, yeah.
Can we add language to keep it broader? I understand, but like I said, I can, I can just foresee someone, an attorney somewhere representing a client and finding an end around on the fact that it says adult use. I'd like to ask counsel, please. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go back to counsel on that one. Since Lynn will be going back to counsel, anybody, any other questions? Go back to counsel with them.
Well, John, just to follow, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up point. I, I imagine even if the state comes up with a more defined set of criteria around the regulation within the next 24 months, there's nothing precluding us from revisiting the regulation thereafter. So again, I, I kind of question the presumption, why we would go with 24 months? If the commission is inclined, we'll see, we'll hear from the public to do a permanent ban at this point.
Yeah, I, I agree with asking that question. So that'll be, that'll be the other question. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, great. Let's open it up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to address this text amendment? Nobody in the room? Lynn, can you check Zoom, please?
Anyone on Zoom would like to address the public, please raise your hand. I don't believe there's any.
Okay, super. Then Lynn, just, you know, the other question I'm wondering and you've answered it, but let's just double check just to make sure that there's no other regulations within our regulations. They literally have to be changed. These footnotes just confuse me a bit. Okay, this, this text amendment application is continued. Item number four, the planning zoning commission will hold in continual public hearing for text amendment to section 7.6 of the zoning regulations. As everybody knows, at our last meeting, we agreed to obtain more public input on the proposed amendments. And also to revisit them, address, refine some of the discussion points we had. So Commissioner Nielsen, Planner Avney, if you want to update us on, please.
Yeah, I'll go. Okay. So as everyone recalls, we talked about this and took public comments at the meeting in August as Chairman Goodman said. And we got some feedback and then we had some further conversations after that. So you'll see a new draft in front of you tonight. It was handed out to the commissioners in the room. It's on the website for people at home. And it looks a little different than what you've seen. As you may recall, in August, the version we shared then had just a very generic statement about the type of bonuses and modifications we might make to development standards in order to support and facilitate the affordable units that we're mandating through this regulation. And one of the comments we got, both from the town attorneys and from the development community was that we probably need to be more specific about the bonuses we're providing. And as much as on one hand, we like that comfortable language that gives us a lot of negotiating room. It could get us into some trouble potentially legally. So the draft you see in front of you tonight does that. And so we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. So there's four main changes from the previous iterations and most of them start, all of them start on page three. If you want to turn to that. So the first major change we made is counting the affordable units that would be mandated by this regulation as counting in addition to what's allowed under the existing zoning as opposed to part of. And that language is at the end of letter A there under number three, inclusionary zoning requirements. It says the affordable units may be counted in addition to the number of permitted dwelling units allowed in the underlying zone. I think the best way to explain this is to use an example, and I did include a page at the end that talks about how I came up with these calculations. But say in an underlying zone, existing zoning, you could build 20 units. Previously, what I had thought I was writing was that if we require 15% to be affordable, that would be three units. It's 15% of 20. And so you could build 17 market rate units and three affordable units to get to your total of 20. What this changes is that now you can build 20 market rate units as you always could. In addition, you have to build three affordable units. So it basically bumps your density up to 23 from 20 in, in the scenario where we're talking about 20.
So it's not, it's not creating a hardship on the developer's initial calculation of what they were proposing to do to the property, but giving them a, if you want to call it a bonus, but giving them the ability to enlarge the development of the property to include the affordable housing.
Right. I mean, the way it was explained to us by the development community is that we don't want to create, and I use this word not in a legal term, taking. So if they were given 20 units and then we tell them, well, now you can only build 17 and you have to build three affordable, it feels like we've taken something away from them. And so this is to kind of correct that.
Question on the points on page seven. Are these, can you do, can a developer use two or three? Two or three of these calculations?
At the same time, are they additive, or you just pick one?
So that's a great question. So the way this is written right now, three A would give you. For providing those fifty, providing fifteen percent of your units as affordable, you get those affordable units without needing approval from us. So if you could have built twenty and you're doing affordable units, then you get twenty three, you don't, you know, we don't have to give you the thumbs up on that. Further down, we'll talk about a density bonus, and that is something that the commission would have say over whether or not we want shoes to approve that option. So, you know, to answer your question, I guess, and looking at that calculation page, number one is sort of by right, if you will, and then number two would be at the commission's discretion.
Thank you.
And just to keep moving, we can come back to any of these things. The second big change is giving a density bonus and saying, you know, what exactly that looks like. And so we chose a fifteen percent density bonus. We chose fifteen percent because that basically gives us a one for one ratio of the number of affordable units that you're having to provide, and then you get a bonus. So for every affordable unit, you get an additional market rate unit, which again helps to make the developers' costs whole for providing this public good in terms of affordable housing. So we added that density bonus, and as you can see, that is something that, like I just said, is at the discretion of the commission. It says the commission may allow a bonus to the number of permitted number, to the total number of permitted units, dwelling units up to fifteen percent. There is some language there after that that says so long as the overall affordability of the project remains above ten percent. And this was a conversation that we had at a meeting last week with some developers and with some of the commissioners that were present. Mister Cassavant in particular didn't want us to fall below the ten percent number, because if you, even if they're providing fifteen percent affordability, now that we're giving them that in addition to, and the bonus, you've just upped the number of units. So it decreases what I'm calling the overall affordability of the project, which is number three on that calculation page. That being said, I made a quick spreadsheet of what this could look like, I ran it up to sixty one units, I mean, I think it doesn't matter if you keep going to a hundred, but. It, we never would fall below ten percent affordability, it always comes out the at the highest in terms of low number of units, if you're doing five, six, seven units, you're in the thirteen, fourteen percent range. And then once you get into higher units, you're at twelve percent, so I don't, I don't think we'd have a problem with that, but we just wrote that as a caveat, because that was important to us, that we stay above ten percent.
So Commissioner Nielsen, if I understand you correctly, looking at page seven of this document, which I'm, I think this is very well put together. Number one would be a matter of right, they don't need to ask this commission, they can do so.
Correct, that being said, everything has to come for special permit, but yes.
And number two and three, this commission in its wisdom can decide whether to allow the bonus or not, we can, but we don't have to.
Right, so number two is the only bonus, number three was just me kind of showing you what I'm calling overall affordability as opposed to the fifteen percent upfront, so that's not really a bonus, that was just.
So number two, then, the three extra units I'm calling.
Right.
So the twenty regular as a right.
Right.
It's the three affordable units you get, and the three bonus units the commission can award but doesn't have to.
Correct.
Understood, thank you. And I think the idea, especially from Commissioner Cassavant, who's very knowledgeable on affordable housing, that. If you want to keep the ratio of new affordable units, visa the new dwelling units above ten percent. Otherwise, we're always, we're just gonna keep falling behind.
Right, and so that's what we wanted to make sure, we weren't giving so much of a bonus that even though we required fifteen percent upfront, when you start adding all these extra units on that you start to fall below.
Which I think is, strikes me in first blush as a very good idea.
And then the last, I mean, this is not last, but this is a lot of changes, so we went specifically into the changes that we could make to the development standards. You know, once you allow an increase of density on site, and only fit so much on a lot, you've got to start modifying potentially other development standards to make it fit. And so what you see here under three F, there's some lowercase Roman numerals, but those go through, again.
Page four.
Page four into page five. The potential modifications the commission could approve, it kind of paints. A picture of what we would, could modify up to or reduce down to, it's not a given, those, it just kind of puts everything in a realm so that. You know, for this guy, we're not allowing him to have, you know, no parking, and this guy, we're requiring him to have seventy five percent of the parking, it kind of just gives us the parameters that we have to work within with the developers as we try to figure out how to make this all fit. So I can go through that in detail if anyone wants us to, and then the last. Change is. We decided to set the fee in lieu of, which I know is our, one of our favorite conversations, at three hundred percent of state median income. And that would net us, I think, three hundred and seven, I have it written down here. Three hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars a unit, that is the same as what the town of Darien has done, and. We seem to think that it was fair and it could work for us.
Question, how often would the state median income number be changed by whoever decides to stick a pin in that number?
Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it changes annually. Yeah.
And we decided to use state median income as opposed to another median income because?
Just because the number came out in the ballpark we thought was fair, that's, again, like I said, what Darien uses, we're using state median income throughout, because state median income is lesser than our area median income, it just, it made a lot of things consistent.
Microphone, please.
In addition to that, eight dash thirty G, which this ties to use as state median income, so that was another part of the.
Thank you.
So, so to follow up on that point, Ms. Nielsen, if we're go back to. Page two. Under authority and purpose, and by the way, this is, this is really well done. Where we, where it says at or below eighty percent of median income, is that referring to state?
Correct, so our current zoning regulations have a definition of median income, which is consistent with the state, which says that basically it's the lesser of state or area median income. Which in our case is probably always going to be the state median income, so I didn't put state in there, just because, like I said, it's a reference to our own definition section where we define median income.
And then, if you could help me with my own confusion on this part, when I think about what we, what the state calls affordable. Oftentimes it will refer to thirty percent of a median income, whether it's area or stated median income, I guess probably state. No more than thirty percent should be devoted to housing costs to make it affordable. So when we're talking about that eighty percent of median income, which I'm just gonna throw out a number, let's say state median income is a hundred thousand dollars for family. And we're talking about eighty percent of that, so eighty thousand dollars, are we then taking thirty percent of that eighty percent to get down to twenty four thousand dollars, no more than twenty four thousand dollars being used for housing costs to be affordable? So where does that thirty percent of, if it all come into that language?
Um, I'll let Mister Cassavant or someone else who's more knowledgeable on this, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the thirty percent. Is referring to how much they want a family spending per month or annually on housing, so it more comes into play, I think, when developers. Are setting the sale price or the rental price of the units, so that they're not setting it above what a family making eighty percent of the area or the state median income could afford. Monthly, Mister Cassavant, you look like you want to talk.
Sure, I'll be glad to comment, there are a couple of distinctions here that matter a ton. First, the thirty percent is within the parlance of affordable housing considered to be a target for any household at almost any income level, not to spend more than that. On their housing expense. Within the realm of affordability indexes, however, there are several distinctions, there's low income, there's moderate, there's median and high income. And for the calculation of eight thirty G, households that fall, for example, below thirty percent of median income are considered ultra low. Low income is from thirty to fifty, and so on and so forth. Within the characterization, the measurement of eight thirty G, you get credit basically for low and moderate income residents. Virtually all of this housing throughout the state is rental only, there is virtually no for sale housing that qualifies, theoretically it could, but it never does. So what we are likely to be dealing with in the case of developments in Fairfield County is rental housing. Generally because that is supplemented with a variety of tax credits, both federal and state. Those federal and state credits are really only available for the development of rental housing. So the, the question in place will be, will there be developers who will build housing? And in, and of course, the essence of eight thirty G, and perhaps I know, see some of our developers here who may comment on this tonight. But the essence of eight thirty G is that if the community as a whole has not met its targets under eight thirty G, or has not achieved a moratorium against those targets. A developer can override local zoning rules and build at a higher density or a variety of other options. So I've spoken a great deal here, but the essence of this is that thirty percent is a target of what a household should spend. But the measurement of eight thirty G deals with points awarded relative to actual dwelling units in a community.
Thank you.
As an additional comment, I think that the draft, which has been provided by the subcommittee, has been formed with a great deal of. Consideration of both the public policy coming out of Hartford, the desires and input from the development community about reasonableness. And most importantly, the objectives of the town of New Canaan to continue its efforts to provide affordable housing to a variety of income levels.
This is Commissioner Chris, I would agree with Commissioner Cassavant, I'm very pleased with the progress we've made, we've had what's over six months of open meetings and input from the public. As well as from other parties, which I think has been extraordinarily helpful, we've taken a few draft bites of the apple here, and I think the draft we have now is. Very close to cooked, I think the rest of it I would hope would occur tonight. I see this as significant progress for, for our town and our residents and future residents.
Krista, anything else you wanted to point out in the new draft?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Chairman, I had, this is Chris Herring, I had a question on, on the draft and reading it for Krista, if that's possible, just clarification, really.
Sure, absolutely, fire away.
Okay, well, in looking at the draft, Krista really enjoyed the text here. I was looking at page where we go into the business B, C, and D zones, where it says basement levels dedicated in entirety to storage and nonliving. Shall not be counted as a story in the calculation of height. I, I just wanted to understand, I understand if. You know, the grade of the, of the lot is such that. You know, the parking is subgrade and the average mean grade is, you know, above the, the level here, but I'm, I just want to make sure that. It isn't sort of taken advantage of, because I could imagine that. If this is spun in the wrong way. You know, when you, when you say basement, is that like subterranean basement or, or, or grade level basement? Because if someone has two quote unquote basements that are first and second story, and then adds fifty feet on top of it at seventy feet up. And I just wanted to understand, like, how are we protecting against? People adding another twelve feet to the fifty feet?
Um, okay, so number one, for those who are following along, it's, this is page five that we're talking about of the draft. That language I took directly from existing language on maximum building height in those zones, I guess. In our ordinance right now, that language comes specifically from applying in the business B zone, so that's where I took it from, just to be clear, I didn't invent it. And secondly, in trying to understand it myself, there are definitions in our definition section, we have a definition of a basement and a definition of a cellar. I will have to turn it over to Lynn if someone really wants clarification on the difference between those two, because I don't personally understand it. But that being said. I, I don't know, Lynn, have we ever had a problem in the past with that clause being used in business B to get around the maximum height limits that are set?
We have not had a problem yet, and typically that would be like if, if they put an underground garage in, so the intent was to not count the garage as a level, so that we don't penalize the developer. If they're gonna put in affordable housing. And if it was entirely below grade, and just to go back to the definitions in section two point two, there is a definition for both basement and cellar, and basement is when. One half or more of the total height is above the average grade, and cellar is the opposite, when more than half the height is below the average grade.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, and then just the second point I had, and I maybe, maybe this is a minor point, but for the. For the fund, this is on page one. In section two applicability, we have the section B where we such, we stipulate that, that housing trust fund accumulated monies shall only be distributed to either. The town of New Canaan, the town of the Canaan Housing Authority, or, or NFP, non-for-profit. I, I thought at one point we discussed the idea of private institutions that weren't necessarily non-for-profit competing. To kind of compete for those funds, under that, I think someone had mentioned under the parlance that, that those private developers actually were quite efficient at developing housing, and that. Those dollars could go quite far, put in the hands of private developers, so I just wanted to make sure I understood. You know, is this a, is this a significant change that we're pointing towards non-for-profits versus for-profit developers?
So it is a change, I don't know that it's significant, I believe the money in the housing trust fund to date has only been used by the New Canaan Housing Authority. Can correct me if I'm wrong on that, and in my viewpoint, this is put in there right now as a stopgap measure. We have to do a eight thirty J housing affordability plan for the state, required by the state by next June. And Lynn and I have talked, I'm hopeful as part of that, we'll set some priorities about what we want to see for affordable housing, and, you know. I think there would be pressure to share the money from the housing trust fund with private developers, and I think we need to come up with a process and a method. For doing so in a fair and equitable way, and we just, we haven't done that yet, so for now, we've closed the door until we figure out how to open it properly.
This is Commissioner Cassavant, could I comment as well? To the extent that a for-profit developer wished to apply for and to build housing. There are a set of available state-driven and federal-driven programs administered, for example, by Connecticut Housing Finance Authority in the form of tax credits. And the Department of Housing in terms of using something called a qualified application plan. That can in fact provide a for-profit developer with an opportunity to utilize a variety of financing tools. Whereas if the town were to provide money from its trust fund, in an effect, to some degree, it could be viewed as a limited partner or a co-investor in a private project. Harder for us to figure out how to do as a town, so to the extent that an experienced commercial developer wished to take advantage of state programs. It is plausible, not likely, but plausible, that they might be able to apply using CHAF or Department of Housing resources. You know, rather than applying for the state, I'm sorry, rather than applying for any available housing trust funds.
I would, I would also note that New Canaan Housing Authority so far has had an exemplary record in terms of putting together the, the affordable housing developments. So. this is a a town actor that's very, very good at what they do. And there's an alignment of interest in terms of what they're doing with what we're trying to achieve.
I just wanted to throw this out there as well. Um, there's been some discussion, maybe even a draft put forward by the selectmen on the use of ARPA funds for New Canaan, which I think is going to be in total around six million dollars. And a few million dollars, there's for a few million dollars, there's been some proposed uses of those funds. My sense is that any one of us or the commission could potentially put forward the idea of using some of those ARPA funds for the Housing Authority, for the trust fund. And I don't know whether, you know, given the parameters of ARPA, that's a potential use, but you know, already in the draft, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars going to the Wavine Ice Rink, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a behavioral program at Silver Hill. So it seems like there's a lot of flexibility and 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 potential use of the ARPA funds and and perhaps it's worth a discussion of whether any of that could be devoted to um to this.
Yeah, they're they're recently um I think it was in Westport that they are using, and I don't know the details, but they are using ARPA funds for certain um affordable housing initiatives. Mr. Cassavant, maybe you know about that. So that can be part of the discussion, uh, but I don't think we have to worry about it in terms of what we're looking at tonight. Mr. Cassavant?
Yes, there there is a significant use or intent to use ARPA money for affordable housing. There is pending before the IRS, an important question, however, related to the deployment of ARPA money. As the current code is written, the tax code, utilizing ARPA funds actually does not, is not allowable to be added into basis of projects, which um is being appealed by multiple states, including Vermont and Maine. The the challenge here and 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 consideration of use of the ARPA funds for affordable housing is a great idea. There are some technical drafting problems with it. Um, but I agree with Commissioner uh Goodwin here that we don't need to consider that particular discussion relative to our proposed consideration tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of technical questions on the draft, if I may, and type over to and wordsmithing. I'm going to go from the beginning on uh two A, under applicability. Question, review my ignorance, the term Housing Trust Fund is not capitalized, but it's capitalized under under two B. I'm not sure whether this is a defined term or what. So that was usually capitalization means is defined term of some sort.
Um, okay, so it's not and two A, the part in black is all the existing language. So I think we probably need to be consistent with that and not capitalize it.
Okay. Another question, review my ignorance, there is a separate, the Housing Trust Fund is a separate defined fund that I presume the treasurer of the town is master of and keeps that. Okay, fair enough. I wasn't sure what's a defined term or not. Going to the second page. It's a typo. It's under Housing Affordability Plan Requirements. Under one second line, it says how Housing Affordability Plan, and there's a prens, the pren seems to be left over from something else that should be eliminated.
Correct.
Uh, also at the bottom, under authority and purpose, under the third line, the last word eight, I think it should be AT with a Y.
Yep.
So uh, also, it doesn't say state median income. I'm, I think we're okay with that by not saying state.
Correct.
Okay, because it says state otherwise in some other areas in the draft, so I think about consistency of language.
Okay.
That was that. I had a question on page three, excuse me, under Inclusionary Zoning Requirements, number D. It says in general, is there a reason to say in general or just could explain to me?
No, I mean, that's just my parlance, but.
Okay. And um, let me get the rest, see if I have any typos. On page six. I did circle the three hundred, but we've talked about that and we haven't voted yet, but.
I'm sorry, you circled what?
That's fair enough.
Three hundred percent.
The three hundred percent.
Got it.
At the very bottom, it seems to be a widow, uh, I I dot. I would kill that. And uh, those are my comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's uh, you're good, Krista. Well, we'll get open to the. You're you're good with your. Okay, anybody in the room from the public like your dresses, reg reg amendment? All good? Okay, Lynn, let's check Zoom land, please.
If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to address the public, could you just raise your hand, please?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Your door is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I have a few questions on it, which is, have we tried any of the verbiage out on any of the pieces of property that this might actually apply to? To see if the system that we're trying to create actually works.
Do you mean just like running test scenarios or something on paper?
Yeah, because again, if you know, the hope is either that people will buy their way out or try to build this, might it not be a good concept to take a few pieces of property uh in the zones that we think that this might go and see if it's actually buildable by the regulations that you guys are trying to draft?
I mean, I have done it on my own, but I don't think that I'm definitely, Lynn, Lynn, you've done it as well.
We have picked some random parcels to test smaller and larger.
And with the bonus, how many units would you be getting on? You know, a sample piece of property, is that become a two-and-a-half-story building, a three-story building?
It would depend on, it would depend on the parcel.
Okay, um, you know, years ago, when we rewrote the zoning book, we tried to actually take some test case. And, you know, again, since this seems to be local, largely downtown properties, uh, most that are uh of certain sizes, I thought it might be advantageous to to try to get, you know, to see if it actually works.
Well, I think as the planner said, she has applied it to certain properties. And I know from the subcommittee discussions, there have also been discussions of of concerning the downtown zones and what it could mean. So I I think there has been attention paid to that.
Okay, and as far as the funds, since the uh town of New Canaan has zero land available to use the funds, doesn't that present another issue of getting that money paid into a fund that nobody can access? And we we will have used most of the funds that are available uh from Canaan Powers. But then there are also funds that probably come back to the town from Canaan Powers. Let the town owns no more land to build any affordable housing on.
Potentially.
Okay.
I don't think that's a fact.
Well, right now, there's no property. I mean, again, unless the town donates it or they buy it from somebody, there's nothing in the town repertoire that I can see anywhere where this proposal would actually work. Because either the property is too big or you're going to end up with buildings larger than you might actually agree with.
Any other input, Mr. Carter?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in Zoom land, Lynn?
Is there anyone else on Zoom that wants to speak? Then please raise your hand.
Okay, super. Commissioners, can I close it?
Yes, sir.
Great. Well done. Tremendous work. His application's closed. Okay, item number five, deliberation, any possible action on a closed public hearing item? We continued fourteen Skyview Lane. So do I have a motion for approval or denial of eighty-one Canoe Hill Road? Or me? Okay. Eighty-one Canoe Hill Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I I I can make a motion, uh, chairman, to approve.
Okay, reasons for approval, Mr. Herring?
I think based on that presentation and the screening, uh, as well as the the condition as far as the the ability and the willingness of the applicant to add, you know, noise abatement, should should that be required? As well as the size of the property and the adjacent lot also owned by the applicant. It all seems within um and the temporary nature of the structure all seems within uh reasonablyness, reasonable uh reasonable norms, as well as the conversations they've had with their neighbors.
Okay, so the the one condition you would want would be concerning um noise abatement. So something to the tune of, I'm I'm open to should any neighbors express concerns about?
Yeah. Should, yeah, should um should should any neighbor express, you know, um, concerns to the the town zoning office of, you know, excessive noise related to the chillers? Um, I don't think we can say related to people screaming on the rink or whatever. That applicant shall make um you know, that better efforts to install noise abatement um mitigation around chillers.
And Lynn, does that give you enough meat?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's specified in the application, so I don't think we have to. Do you agree? You okay with that? Okay, you good with that, Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Okay, super. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Radman, I heard Mr. Radman first, uh, discussion of the motion.
This is John Chris, I have a question. So this is a um permanent allowance, not a one-year deal.
Correct.
Permanent.
Yeah, that was, yes.
They would put it up and take it down every year, but like next year, they they come back and they don't have to ask us again. Got it. Okay, thank you.
So this James Bash, I just have one question related to Mr. Herring's motion. If we say something along the lines in the condition of of any budding neighbors and then, you know, the follow-on language, would that condition also allow for the possibility of new neighbors who don't own property right now coming in and buying that property? And um and having that same condition be in place for anyone new um outside of the existing abutting neighbors right now?
But think of you, Lynn, if you just put the term adjacent neighbors, then that would cover it.
That was, that was my intent.
Yep.
It would be transitory, it was transitive based on, you know.
Oh, I bet, but Mr. Bash, I thought you, James, I thought you were referring to would it cover like somebody who bought the house next door in the future? Is that not what you were saying? Did I misunderstand?
That is what I was saying. I just want to cover for any future and anyone that will be a potential abutting neighbor in the future, whether they are one currently.
Yep, so just say adjacent neighbors, and then you're good. Okay. Um, you know, look, the one one thing I'll note is um hockey rinks and neighbors' lawns is uh part of New Canaan. I've played in them myself, and it's a lot of fun. And I think that, you know, the reason why this is in front of us is because it's really on a two-street lot. Otherwise, it would not probably have not received as much scrutiny, so I'm comfortable with it. So I I call the motion, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Carries unanimously. Okay, cannabis is continued, so item number four. The Regulation Amendment to Section seven point six of the Regulations, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
John Chris, I will be approved with the um the draft that presented with the, I'm calling them typo changes that I suggested in my commentary be included in the uh final document.
Okay, and Mr. Chris, if you would, since this is a is a regulation amendment, if you would kindly address how this meets the objectives of the plan of conservation development?
One of the key issues of planning conservation development is to have a diverse town with a range of housing options for people. Not only income levels, but different types of housing. And uh, over a number of years, the uh, this commission has been in the forefront of endeavoring to do so through its um, pretty the Housing Trust Fund that I'm calling it a tax, which it really is. Uh, and this is a further step forward in helping to provide uh safe, clean, affordable housing to people of more modest means who can live in our town. And uh, I would see that as very much in keeping with our plan of conservation development.
Okay, and then we're also uh required with the Regulation Amendment, I think I I think you just did it, but to state for the record to say how this protects the public health, safety, welfare, property values, and also attains the purposes of these regulations. I think you covered, but just for the record.
As far as public uh health and safety, the provision of clean, affordable housing certainly speaks to public health and safety for those who are dwelling in these units. Uh, and as well as neighbors, that uh the neighbors will can rest assured that um people of more modest means living in um subsidized housing are in uh nice dwellings and uh well-built buildings, which provide safety and comfort for all residents in New Canaan. Uh, and I see that as um as positives for our town. It uh, I think providing diversity helps property values makes uh for a more uh livable town. And uh, I think those are very much in keeping with our plan with conservation conservation development and the health and welfare of the people in the canon.
Okay, thank you. And then one more item, Lynn, what is the soonest effective date we can use? Okay, Mr. Chris, you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, super. Do I have a second?
All seconded, it's Commissioner Cassavant.
Okay, um, further discussion of the motion for the Regulation Amendment. Um, one thing that I I I'll point out a few things. One is, and you're going to be, I know you're sick of hearing me say this, um, but one is um look, the the way we make progress is um, we, well, first, I should say, we've we've spent an awful lot of time on this and you know, we we could study this for the next few years and argue overdrafting, argue about implications, argue what happens. And and it's it's, I found in whatever it's been sixteen years that I've sat on this commission is that frequently, you know, we've passed regulation amendments and never totally positive of what all the implications are. And, you know, we, as I love to say, we just have to jump into the cold water at some point. And any regulation amendment can be changed. Um, so that worries me um a lot less, you know, unforeseen circumstances. We've we've done our best to try to figure out what those might be. The second thing is, look, this is a laudable goal and objective is to provide the opportunities for more affordable housing in the town of Connecticut. As I've testified in Hartford and said many, many times, I I think we're a fairly progressive town. But, you know, we can always continue to do better, and I just think this is a great strike forward. Anybody else? Okay, call a question, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash, congratulations. Mr. Bash, congratulations. This carries unanimously. And one more time, I would like to thank all of thank all of those who participated in the subcommittee. It's it's been a heck of a lot of work and and I would like to. Particularly thank Ms. Nielsen and Ms. Avney, who really did the the lion's share of of the work on this. Well done. Okay, forty-nine North Wilton Road. So you'll remember last month. First, I I thank Mr. Scornia for. Advancing a motion last month. You know, it's these difficult applications where, you know, sometimes it's hard to come across to to put something forward. There was no second. Mr. Mr. Scorny made a made a motion for denial. There was no second. I put it off for the month. My view here was let's give us all month to think about this. You know, I I have a couple of thoughts and rather than. Call for a motion upfront. Perhaps what we can do on this one is talk a little bit about it. You know, as I thought about it is, you know, what what is the applicant seeking approval for? It's for garage that can house five cars. That's what the applicants put forward. The applicant has also put forward for grading for greater than a thousand cubic yards and greater than ten thousand square feet of soil disturbance. Potential conditions, you know, and again, just reviewing the record and reviewing the discussion. If the commissioners were so inclined to approve, potential conditions that I heard last month was no lifts. Mr. Radman, I think you pointed out that they should resubmit the site plan addressing the issues with the retaining walls. Is that correct? That they would have to either come back to the commissioner, come back to the planner, if they wanted to do conditioning of the interior of the garage. Other conditions could be prohibit commercial use if you were worried about that. Another commission, another condition, and again, I'm not arguing for these conditions. I'm just putting some ideas out there. You know, height could be another one. Increased screening, although seemed like there is a good deal of screening on the property already, but that could be another condition. So those are some of the conditions that I heard. We had, we did have the neighbor input. You know, one thing, couple of comments on the neighbor input is. No one has a right to a sanctity of use. Of adjacent properties. So we've all had properties next to us where things have been built there. Now, we can take the view that something is too large and too large for the property. They're ready to clean the clean the room. Maybe that's a signal for me to stop talking. Yeah, I think.
The hook here.
Exactly. I think there were concerns that, you know, there would be some sort of business carried on there. I I did not see that. That could potentially be another, well, I already mentioned a commercial use. Another thing I thought about this is, okay, well, you know, how big will it be? And I think it would be interesting for each of, you know, people who have a feel for that, you know, to comment, you know, is is this ultimately too large? One of the questions, you know, I discussed this with Lynn. And, you know, Lynn, I think, you know, your view was, you know, this is the sort of the size of a modest single home, I think, is, you know, how you put it is. Do I quote you correctly? So, you know, if you were on the side of denial, I mean, one of the things you could think about is it simply too much? For more of that property. So, you know, just some of my ideas for discussion. So I open it up.
Mr. Chairman, it's John Chris. As far as the size, it's it's big and given the very steep slope. And it's going to be built on with some of the structures that will be needed to. Support the the garage and makes it even bigger. And that would be my main concern that simply the 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 unit itself plus the. Appertentances to it, just to keep it above ground. It it is quite substantial and is it is it too substantial? Haven't quite stuck a pin in an answer in my own mind on that one, but that's what's. Forefront of my mind. It's the it's the size regarding screening and visibility from neighbors. I I didn't get a sense that that would be. A big issue given the site and given existing vegetation. And where the houses that they'd live in. So that was less of an issue for me. It was really that just the size of it and particularly given the that slope is pretty steep and then I need a lot of stuff to sort of keep the building up. Which makes it even bigger. So that's where I am. I haven't decided one way or another.
Anybody else?
Um, I I this is Claire to Scornia. I'd have to say I agree with both Johns. I agree with Mr. Chris. Because I'm kind of at that point too, like, is it too big? And I'm, you know, going back and forth, but with Mr. Goodwin, those conditions. I'm very comfortable with adding those conditions to any approval. So. If if we can add those on, I'd be comfortable with approving it.
I I did have one issue, what I think it poses at the last meeting. Has to do with the some of the support structures and it's going to be cement block. Which is not the prettiest stuff. And I think cement block, I think of some of the retaining walls on the way into the transfer station, which is cement block. Okay, it's a transfer station. I realize it's not gonna be. All all that fancy and doesn't really look bad, but it it's not the prettiest stuff. And so I'd be more amenable if it were skinned in some natural stone or something that looks nicer than cement block. But that's that's me.
That's, this is Dan Radman. That's one of my biggest concerns. I really, is it too big? The footprint of the building, no, I think it's in scale with the rest of the house. I mean, we're dealing with a rather large piece of property. And a rather large existing house. The the proposed garage, the way they've dealt with the roof lines and the portion of flat roof. So that you don't have an exceedingly high elevation when viewed from the driveway side. I think it's it's fine. This is the elevation or the rear elevation that faces east is the one I have the biggest issue with. Number one, it's it's the. Massing of all of that retaining wall, right? You have a vertical elevation of concrete block, which it is, that is greater than the height of the actual building. It's tiered, right? There's multiple levels, but you have in excess of, you know, there's probably. Twenty-five to thirty feet of vertical elevation of retaining wall as it steps up. I understand there's going to be plantings that will definitely help, but I do agree with Mr. Chris. It'd be nice to see it in a natural stone or or done in such a way, and I'm not sure how. There's definitely a lot of structural gymnastics that have to happen in order for this retaining wall to work properly. But if there's a way to break it up in such a way where. The plantings are done in such. That that alone showing the plantings on a rendering of this elevation would help sell the project to us, right? We would, we would then be able to see what the neighbor across the way is seeing because that neighbor that's on, I think it's Laurel, looking back. That was their big concern. They're they're looking at this elevation and I would be concerned about that, too. There's got to be a way to kind of address that retaining wall so that it's so it's not so massive looking. The the other component of that elevation is it does not have the dormer articulation that the three other elevations do. So the three other elevations, there's and there's no occupiable second floor, but there's a, there's a dormer. Bump up on each one of them that has some transom windows up on those dormers. That that helps break up that elevation better than the rear. The rear just has the lower level with the massing of the roof. If, and that's something we always, when we deal with special permits for. You know, we talked about a different type of project, but for the Country Day School, right? There was the massing of the building and trying to break it up in such a way where there was not a continuous run of elevation that that went on for a certain. Distance and try and make it look like it was. Broken up a little more architecturally. I think that would help it here. And it would not be complicated. It would be a small addition to that roof line in the back that would just help soften that elevation. That in conjunction with the retaining wall. Material modifications, I think that would that would go a long way.
So what you could do there is you could. Try to word everything you just said into a condition. You could deny and have them come back with a new application. Or you could have the condition that they come back to the planner and then the complanter can rely on some commissioner input. So those would be the three ways we could deal with that type of input if the rest of the commissioners agreed with. Mr. Chris's and Mr. Radman's concerns.
One, one, this is Mr. Rad. This is Dan Radman. One thing that concerns me is just the amount of retaining wall here. And we've asked this of other applicants where there's a larger scale of this type of construction to come back with the actual material they're proposing. The drawings that they've submitted, note that it's versa block, right? Versa block is a commercially made. CMU block decorative, but there's fifteen different types. They all look different. They could be. Transfer station caliber. They could be stamped that are more look that look more like fieldstone. There's all different types and colors. I'd like to see them come back to us with an example of the material they're using. It could be versa block. It could look fine, but we don't know the exact one that they're proposing.
Is this is John Chris. I mean, I am less amenable to versa block and simply skinning it natural fieldstone.
That's fine, too.
Natural fieldstone is a. Building material used in New England since millennia. I don't don't, I don't think anyone's really complained that they're looking at a nice fieldstone foundation of a house or a barn or anything else. Looks nice. It's clearly natural. And if we're skinned in, when I say natural fieldstone, I mean a real genuine rock. It's round or oblong or some other natural shape, whatever the whatever it came out from the glaciers. And also that any and all plantings be native. I would defer to Commissioner Radman and the language on any dormer issues, but those be my two hot buttons.
What does that do to cost? Is that fieldstone? Is that substantially?
Not my worry.
It's not our worry, but you know, I just wonder if.
It would it would cost more. I mean, one thing is that, I mean, others, they have different, take input from other commissioners is that. If you're skinning it in that, you can have something cheaper and uglier and. You know, very structurally sound behind it because you don't care because you're not looking at it. And so you don't need the fancier fake brick. You can use, you know. Basic cement brick, but you don't care because it's structurally sound, yet you have the. Skin of natural fieldstones. That's what you're looking at. So what's behind it is is it really nothing to worry about. So that would take some of the cost down is my view.
I mean, Mr. Radman's suggestions. I don't know what relative costs would be at all, but. Mr. Radman's suggestions be more.
Cheaper?
A cheaper and perhaps more acceptable or. I mean, something that the. Owner of the applicant. Could live with.
Well, I I don't get the sense, this is John Chris again. I I don't get the sense that. The, well, I do, I get the sense that the owners are house proud. And they want their property to look nice. It's a very nice looking property. Now, I think adding fieldstone certainly adds to the ambiance of any property in this area. I I can't see how most reasonable people would say, gee, fieldstone, that's just really ugly that like it. And I I think it's a, it's a classic building material that most everyone thinks looks nice. And it by definition blends into the blends into the the countryside well because it's natural fieldstone. You see it everywhere. You see fieldstone walls everywhere. People like looking at them. So I would see that as a a plus. I mean, look at the. Well, I said, look at the issue we had with the view with the. Non-feels fake wall they put in versus the nice stone wall they put in. Now that's more dimensional and squares and so forth. When I say fieldstone, I mean, this can be round, but which I think is even nicer, but it looks different and it looks nicer if it's natural fieldstone. So if if we're conditioned on native planting and natural fieldstone and it's a dormer to break up the. Eastern view, I think it's right, the eastern view towards lower road. I would be okay with that. I think it's enough to soften the mass of what they're meaning to build. Like, I can live with that.
And and for what it's worth, my observation last time in terms of the reconciling the terracing, looking east and and making sure they've got the. Even terracing, like one side had three terraces versus the other side shows four, but they're all coming down to the relatively same elevation. I think there's a little more design work that has to go in there. And as a part of that, there might be a way to do that where you're. And landscaping isn't really shown on any of the drawings, right? So there might be a way to introduce landscaping in such a way where. It's doing most of the screening, if you want to call it that. And the terrorist walls of fieldstone could be minimized because you're only seeing the top. I don't know, two, three feet of it, right? But the rest of it is sloping downhill as the terraces go along. That's all landscaped. So there might be a way to solve both issues with a slight redesign of the way the retaining wall is.
Everybody else?
Um, this is Claire to Scornia. I like what Commissioner Radman just proposed. I'm also wary about. Putting in a condition, what material the homeowner has to use. I mean, I'm confident that there are many stone and stone options on the market that may not be as expensive as a fieldstone. And would look just as nice. So I would, I would propose maybe having the applicant come back to us. With the materials they want to use, either us or to Lynn. And, you know, whether you, you know, whether we approve the materials or not, just give them a chance, you know, to come back with some different options.
Okay. Anybody, yeah, but they they could come back to Lynn and then. Lynn could make the decision in consultation with certain commissioners or in regular meeting, Lynn could come back to the entire commission and say. Yeah, here's what they've come back with.
I agree.
You okay with if we go, just real quick, if we go in that direction, Lynn, are you okay with that? Okay, sorry, Chris, go ahead.
This is Chris Herring. I I had a couple of comments. You know. I I do think it's quite large and and looking at the allowable coverage of the lot, which is in the the presentation, it goes from roughly. Seven thousand and change up to nearly eleven thousand, which is the lots maximum. From coverage. And. When I looked at the. It was, I was, there was, I think all of us have seen the water events recently. I was looking at the hydrology and I'm I'm a layman as well, but looking at the. Looking at the calculations, the twenty-five year storm maximal of six inches in a day just seems sort of quaint these days. So I was thinking about, like, I I think the earlier applicant. Went ahead. I was, I guess I I lean on Lynn to understand whether they're doing the bare minimum of. Of water runoff containment or whether whether they're being a little generous because it's just a lot of lot coverage when you add up. All the driveways, the patios and and given the the severity of of the the fall off in the back of the lot. That just adds, you know, feels that fire. That's I would just, I would ask the the applicant to come back with a little more detail as to. Those pieces of the hydrology. And then. On the, I I tend to agree with Commissioner Tiscornia on the the material specification. I think fieldstone is pretty expensive, but I did think that some of the presentation was a little sloppy when they were talking about. The heights of the retaining wall. I think Dan caught a few. Inconsistencies. So I think that that having them come back and demonstrate that. The heights are, you know, within code and that, you know, the landscaping, I I think one of the neighbors complained about. The fact that this would basically be a sheer wall. So I think having some vertical landscaping would break up that that experience and. Probably more more effectively than a changing of materials. So I guess my two points would be, you know, landscaping. And water can. So I guess my two points would be, you know, landscaping and water containment, just a closer examination of those two pieces.
But I can't remember. Commissioners remind me, was there a storm order management report submitted with this application?
There is. I, I have it here, John, and it just talks about the twenty-five year maximum. It, it doesn't necessarily. It just doesn't seem to necessarily. We didn't talk that much about it. It, it, it seems like it, it doesn't. I'm curious as to whether it's the bare minimum or whether it's. Adds a little cushion to it. Because the existing versus the for the proposed conditions, I don't think are. Are that compelling based on what I'm looking at here, but.
We'll compile the report, Chris. I can't read it from there.
Fairfield County Engineering.
It was Fairfield County Engineering. And maybe that's a town engineer question.
But that is a town engineer question.
Can we condition?
We can condition, we could, we can condition it or e- either of your options. You can either condition it or you could deny it and enforce them to come back.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we have two choices here. As I'm listening to everybody. Choice number one is we deny the application. The applicant has heard what our concerns are, and then the applicant can come back with a new application, which would be. Sufficiently different from the application that we've denied. Or we can approve it, condition all of this. And I think ultimately have them come back to Lynn to address the conditions. And then Lynn has the option of coming back to the commission or approving it at her level in consultation with. Any number of commissioners. So now I do need a motion.
This is Commissioner Casvand. I will move it. I'm going to do my best to try to identify. We, I move for approval. Consistent with our overall objective of encouraging sensible development. However, all of the conditions referred to in this conversation. Should cause a redraft of the plan to come back to Commissioner, to Lynn Abney. For review with the. Further addition that if she is uncomfortable, she should bring it back to the full commission next month or when it's completed.
Okay, and Art, the items, so the items that are wrote down, you're moving the. You're mo, you're making the motion, so you get to say yay or nay. Conditions, no lifts?
Yay.
Address the retaining walls, the, the mistakes in the retaining walls in the site plan?
Yay.
Has to come back to the commission if they want to do, if they want to do a conditioning plan?
I, a, a, a conditioning plan? I'm sorry, I don't understand, John.
To condition out the. To condition out the garage with heating and everything?
Oh, that's correct. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Prohibit commercial use?
Yes.
Increase screening plan?
Yes.
Building materials.
I was going to add.
Yeah.
Consideration of alternative building materials without specification by us.
Okay, let me write that down. So I got everything here. Referral of the engineer's report to the town engineer.
Yay.
Okay, did I miss anything, guys?
Landscaping?
Yeah.
Oh, increased screening plan. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I believe John mentioned that.
Yeah.
With native plants.
With native plants. Okay.
Dormer in the back. I don't know if we.
Yeah.
The, the dormer.
I, 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 I don't necessarily consider that to be a necessary requirement. I, I think that a revised plan, if reviewed by Lynn. And she was comfortable with it would be okay. I think the dormer might be a nice idea, but I don't think we need to require that. And I've, again, I've tried to summarize this. I listened to the whole discussion. I'd actually be more comfortable if. If Dan or John were doing this, but, but, you know, I think it just seems appropriate.
Well, would you add, I mean, to the dormer point, what about the building materials and additional articulation?
I, I, I thought I had just mentioned that they should show us representations of alternative building materials. As well as the coverings for the wall. I mean, that would have been as clear. I don't think we need to specify them, but I think that they should be provided in some detail, both for them and for the abutting neighbors benefit.
Okay, I got that art. Okay.
But to the rear, to the rear elevation, I still think that they should. Look to address the massing of that reelevation, whether it's a dormer. The articulation of the rear, or, or rear elevation, whether it's by dormer or some other architectural feature or design move. Could be very slight, but something to break up that elevation because you are dealing with, you know, forty-nine or fifty-some odd. Feet of width of that rear elevation that's just. Blank wall.
So, so Art, it, it's, it's not specifying materials, but it's saying come back with materials, but also come back with articulation of that part of the building.
Yeah, please add that. Yes, I'm, I'm, I wish I could say it as clearly as Dan just did, but I, I don't have that technical skill.
Okay. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, great. Any other additional discussion of the motion? We've spent a heck of a lot of time on those things, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just wondered, given some of the. Substantial structural and design changes being proposed, I wonder if it's simply easier for all concerned to deny it without prejudice. They listen to our concerns, they come back with some new drawings. And we start with a clean page because this seems a bit. A lot of stuff. It may just be easier for all concerned.
Well, I, I, I mean, he, hearing this, going through the litany of stuff. It just seems like a lot and they're saying no lifts and so forth. I mean, we have, we have. I understand my, my, my tendency to say no and to reject the approval. And then to, if they wish to come back. Okay, it'd be just peachy with me.
Okay, well, we have, we have a motion on the, do I, do I have a second on the current motion?
I do.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think it's easier if we, I would suggest that we reject it without prejudice. They come back with some of the changes that have been suggested by this commission. And we then would vote on a new and improved plan.
Okay, but we do, from a parliamentary perspective.
That'd be my view on the best course of actions.
Okay.
We're the hockey team Goodwin's got.
Okay, I call the question. John Chris?
No.
Okay, Ms. Nielsen?
No.
Okay, Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Tors Scornia?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
No.
Okay, Mr. Bash?
My apologies, yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Motion carries. Item number seven, planning subcommittee update. Krista, anything additional for us?
No, sir.
No, I'm not expecting anything additional. Item number eight, Lynn, I believe you have an administrative action for us.
Did you put on your microphone? Sorry, Lynn.
Yeah, Lynn, you gotta pick that thing up.
All right, um, okay, so I, I, I'm sure you all remember the recent application from the library. And they're coming in right now for a view of their building permit application. And they have come to us and they have proposed to do. Construction fencing that is. Nicer than what would normally be typical construction fencing. But conflicts with what we normally would allow. And it would essentially become a temporary sign or banner along the way, but this is the center of downtown. So we thought it wise to run it past the commission and. Let you have a look.
Now, also note to Mr. Stone, I assume that's why you're here, right? So Mr. Stone is here representing the library. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Stone on it. Paul, Paul, we'll hold off unless anybody asks questions. Okay?
I don't have a question, but it just looks like a big advert advertisement, so.
I'm sorry, is there a way that we could see it?
I'm sorry, I totally forgot to share. Sorry about that. That's my bad.
It's all right.
Sorry about that. It was.
Thank you.
And you know what? I just changed my mind. I, I asked Mr. Stone to sit down. Mr. Stone, I apologize. Why don't you come on up and give us your rationale? Like, I'm sorry about that.
And, and Lynn, so I, I see the visuals here, but. Are we to assume this is, you know, a six foot, you know, canvas applied to a fence?
Yeah, so what I think best thing to do is to have Mr. Stone tell us exactly what this is, and then you all can ask him questions. So, Mr. Stone.
Hi, this is Paul Stone from Carp Associates. I represent the library on this. So yes, the answer to that question is this would be a six foot tall. Image that would go over the construction fence that runs around the perimeter of the building. So six feet tall, this would go on the scrim, which is that fabric that you see that gets attached to. The fences that covers, largely covers up what's behind it and the construction going on behind it, the excavation, the dirt and that sort of thing, up to a six foot height. So what you see there are images of a lot of interior images and some exterior images. Along with some lettering, which presumably would be that which would be a question of, you know, does that. Become signage, right? Under the, the definition, being of temporary nature, the question is, is it really, is it? Applicable in the same way. It seems like it might be in a gray area. That's why we came before you. To get your understanding and, and take on what this would, how this would be interpreted by the commission. So this would go along three sides of it. Largely it would be South Avenue. Along the construction perimeter, that would be about. Two hundred feet or so along South Avenue. Kind of where that parking lot next to the gas station is, down towards the corner where Christine's Garden is, along that sidewalk. And then east about three hundred and forty feet, basically along the whole sidewalk. That's about three hundred and forty feet all the way over to Main Street. Where Maple and Main Street are. And then north along Main Street, it's about seventy-five feet for the construction perimeter, that whole envelope, protective envelope. And then interior to that, it's less important because it's not really so visible from the street. So these would be repeating images. So at six feet tall, there's, there's another image to Lynn, if you could kind of click, so I think there's three images. This one is without the fall start date. It's identical other than that from the previous one. And the capital letters there in, in New Ca, New and New Canaan. That's nine inch height, and I think there's another image, the last image. Is fourteen, so fourteen inches, as you can see. So it's a little bit bolder, so. And there's a little bit more verbiage on it. So the question is, you know, how this commission views this. You know, understanding that I think there may be some precedence for something similar to this with this summer theater of New Canaan. I'm not really sure. I, I don't know the applications. So that happened a few years ago, maybe even before that. I think it was two or three years ago. Lynn, it might have predated you. I'm not sure. Maybe at the YMCA during their major renovation project and perhaps some of the schools or maybe even the town. The town hall renovation, I don't know, but given that it's. It's not really advertising. I mean, yes, you could say it maybe in the broadest sense, but in a strict sense, is it? You know, it's not a good or a service. It's really just showing sort of an institutional community project that. It's trying to be moved forward just to generate. You know, just the feel of what's to come by presenting these interior images as well as the exterior images. And it would help in the fundraising effort. The, the other take on this could be if there were nothing, if you guys said, no, we don't want anything up there. It could be maybe no letters, but having nothing at all, you'd see the construction. Site and the hall and all of that, which I don't think anyone would think would be. As nice as something like this. So we're trying to make it as nice as possible. So that's why we're here before you. To get your take on this, to look for direction from the commission.
Lynn, can you toggle through wall three, please?
The second one probably has a little bit less lettering. Because it doesn't have the fall twenty twenty-three, which is, you know, obviously the target open date. This one has less. The least of the three options. The first one has a little bit more and the last one has. Is a little bit more yet.
I guess. I typically don't jump in first, but I will this time. If we were to go with this, I think that my view is the third one's way too much. How you guys feel?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. I, I like the second one the best.
I, same.
This is John Chris. I'm not wild about any of them. It seems like an advertisement, and since the idea is to generate. Donations, that means generate sales and you generally advertise to generate sales. I think something more beige. Be better, and I just don't like a big advertisement around the block. And this is what it is. Nice advertisement, but it's an advertisement. That's me.
I don't disagree with you, John, but I do, I mean, just from a personal perspective, I think it's. Nice to know what's getting built in there. I guess the pictures show it. I think something that says New Canaan, New Library would be enough. But I don't know that it needs to be as frequent as shown on.
I understand, as John Chris again, given how much time we spent looking at this thing, I think you kind of know what's going to be built at this point. I've been to that movie, so still got the ticket stub. But.
Is there any way, this is Claire Tescornia, is there any way you could have this, you know, before a big fundraising push? You know, maybe for three months and then take it down and put something that's just like dark green, a little more quiet. Just, I, I can't, I, I don't mind it. I just don't know if I want to see this for the next two years downtown.
Well, I, I guess, I think Commissioner Tescornia, I think it's, it's going to be an ongoing, continuous effort. I don't think it's going to be seasonal. That's my understanding, although I'm not part of that effort. That's my general understanding. But I guess, you know, the, the counter to that might be. That if we had nothing, you'd just see the dirt in the hole. And I guess, what would you prefer that or what you see before you, one of these versions here?
I'd prefer the screening that's like a dark green screen that we've, I mean, didn't we just say that for the view as well?
We did, but we didn't have a lot of interiors that we were trying to have a fundraiser for, right? This is the whole objective here is to, to try to generate, you know, excitement in the community to get, there's. There's the, the major capital campaign and then there's the community capital campaign. I might not be using the right terms here, but. The idea is to, to get people excited with imagery and that's what you see here. And with the lettering. You know, it's, it's very clear what that is. And somebody driving by that might not know, maybe they haven't been focused on the P and Z. Commission hearings and that sort of thing in the news, and they might get excited by seeing some of this. That was the idea.
I think this is Commissioner Chris Herring. I, I tend to think that the murals and the photographs are a lot less problematic than that, than the repetition of the, the letters and then, and the names. So I think, I think the, what, from a guidance perspective, I think the reason that many of us picked the second one, it was a little less. Jarring in terms of. You know, the, the numbers and the naming convention, so. I, I tend to think something with maybe more photographs, more kind of mural-like pieces with less. Less branding would be.
So would, would it be acceptable, say, if I were to propose to the library, and I'm not speaking for them here, but I could bring this back to them and say, hey, you know, this repetition, maybe have maybe two per side, say, if that's three hundred feet, say, along Maple, maybe have three of those down here, because I, I think you're right, in this repetition here, if you played that out over, you know, three hundred and forty feet, there would be, you know, I don't know, eight or nine of those, but if we were limited to maybe a specific number per side, maybe two per side, maybe that would be acceptable to the commission.
And this is John Chris. I have a potentially severe problem with this that could generate significant community blowback. That is nowhere here do I see where any memorialization of the nineteen thirteen library appearing, and people would look at it and say, ah, it's not there. Guess what? And I think some people are gonna get real wound up.
You beat me to the punch.
So, so I appreciate that, and that had been contemplated.
Just saying.
No, it contemplated, I totally appreciate that sentiment, and that was considered. And the thought was if, if we put something in prematurely, because that hasn't been fully worked out, so if we put something in prior to that, then that might be even more problematic. So the thought was to refrain, just, just depict what was in the application, and then work on the second one later, and perhaps maybe open it up once that gets worked out to include that in some fashion in, in the imagery.
Nah, it's John Chris again. I, I understand that, and I think in the meantime, various groups in town are gonna get really wound up looking at this, and I'm not sure I would want to poke that bear at this point.
When are you looking to put the, this is Dan Radman, when are you looking to put up the screening?
Well, it takes, there's a, there's a lead time.
Right.
And it would be after mobilization. Right now, they're in plan review, hoping to get a building permit, and once that happens, we're hoping to not have to to wait too long, but wanted to understand the process, so I wanted to get to, to you all, once they had sort of an idea of what to put forth. And again, it was, the idea was to put forth what was in the application, nothing more, nothing less. Totally appreciate your sentiments on, you know, the preservation effort, but hadn't really crossed that bridge yet, and I totally get what you're anticipating. But to get that going, so that there can be some imagery to get the community excited, to see in the place where it's actually going to be happening. That was the idea behind all this.
John Chris again, I just think at this point, tilting it that windmill, given community sentiment, may not be the best course of action. For what it's worth, we have seen construction fencing and screening like this on other projects in town.
Yeah, we have.
So the, the one that is just being completed on the corner of Locust and Forest.
Yeah.
Right, they had similar imagery, advertising the architect, the images, the builder, et cetera. Wasn't for fundraising purposes, but, you know, it was construction purposes. When the post office went up, they did the same thing. We didn't do it with town hall.
Right.
But there is, you know, a precedent for it, but I think to Mr. Chris's point, I think there's got to be a level of proper sensitivity and timing on the deployment of this kind of fencing. That's all.
Well, here's, here's what we could do is I think Mr. Stone, and he'll bring it back to the library, they, they have the input on nineteen thirteen from you guys. So that's up to them to address that. So then I think it comes back to us to say, you know, are we okay that this is not a, a sign that conflicts with our regulations per se, and we're comfortable with them having something up there versus, you know, just green? I mean, that's what I would suggest, and we'll, I don't think we do official, it's not an official vote, Lynn. But, you know, let's do a straw poll. I mean, how's that sound? Okay, so I'll start. I'm comfortable with them doing something along the lines of number two, nineteen thirteen issue is completely up to them. John, Chris?
I would take a more cautious stance and not do it until some decisions have been made regarding memorial, and then if the library wants to come back and incorporate that into any pictures they have, I'd be much more amenable to it.
Okay, Krista?
I'm okay with number two.
Okay, Dan?
I don't have an issue. I do agree that the option number two that's up on the screen is probably the better of the options, but I also do agree with Mr. Stone in terms of limiting the, the quantity of text frames, call it that, per elevation, and, and it could be, you know, per, per side or per linear footage, you know, some. What, what is the Center Street is, you said three hundred feet?
Maple Street. Yeah, it's like three, a little over three, three hundred and forty feet, roughly.
I mean, if you did four signs on that elevation, every seventy five feet, and use that as a metric on all of the elevations, that would help contain the amount of graphic, text graphic information, and be more focused on the imagery.
Yeah, I, I think everybody will agree with Dan on that. Claire?
I'm fine with option two.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, I'm inclined to give the, the library a lot of discretion. They're trying to raise funds. They feel that this is helpful to them. But I mean, if, if we're to blow up, well, then that's their, that's their, their problem.
Yeah, okay, Art?
Okay.
Art?
I'm, I'm okay with number two. I, I question the premise. I don't think that there are that many folks in town who will be motivated to contribute because they see this, but I'm okay with number two, and like Dan Radman's suggestions.
Okay, Chris?
Sorry about that. Slowly draw there. So I was just saying that I think I like number two, and just maybe reducing the number of text boxes, I think would make a, a little bit of a difference.
Right. Okay, James?
I'm filing number two. Okay, cool, okay.
You've got your feedback, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. As a process, could this be administrative with Lynn, based on?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night. Now, let's keep it administrative. I think we've given them plenty of feedback. Approval of minutes, August thirty first, two thousand twenty-one. It was not a special meeting, it was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion for approval or denial of the minutes?
So move for approval.
Do I have a second? Mr. Chris? Did I, somebody say second?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Scornia second, and John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Nick Ward?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, super. Everybody have a wonderful night. Thank you, as always. We're adjourned.
Thank you.